Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our September ninth, twenty twenty four work session. And we are going to start with a roll call. Kinsey?
Lee?
Here.
Crossen.
Here.
Gerlock.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Becker. I'm going to assume I haven't heard from Andrew, so I'm going to assume he'll be joining us shortly. All right, and we're joined at the table by a representative of our Intercity Student Council. Can you please introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Andres Moore. I'm a senior at Preble High School, and I'm the Intercity Student Council President.
Thank you. Next is our open forum. Is there anybody who would like to? Okay. And then next, under discussion is our Clean Energy Advisory Committee update, and I think that's going to be. Kale. Hi. I might ask you to do this periodically until people get to know you better, but can you introduce yourselves because you're still kind of new?
Not a problem. I am Kale Polczynski. I'm the COO. And I'm the district-appointed representative for the Clean Energy Committee. So I just have a quick update. So we're in the process of working through multiple workshops with our partner McKinstry, presenting to our energy committee. September third was our second workshop, included a condensed version of their workshops, two and three. We did have some board members that attended, which was great, some great discussion. The topics included energy program operations and capital projects. We also, just backtracking a little bit, we did just do a quick summary of workshop number one with the team as well. So after that, then discussed emissions reduction hierarchy, went into some detail on that, and then discussed elements of decarbonization strategies. I won't go into too much detail about that. Also talking about some utility data that the district is already utilizing and some industry benchmarks. Just checking and make sure I didn't miss anything. Discussing the implementation of some of these strategies as well, as far as decarbonization. It does not really follow a step-by-step process, but a continuous process that will be continued to be discussed with that energy committee as we build our recommendation for the board. We will be holding our next workshop in October. That date is posted online, as well as notifying that we did open, we have some open seats for that energy committee and had posted advertisement for applicants of the vacant positions. Any questions on that? Sorry, I know I was kind of brief.
Oh, that's fine. Brian?
I see what you did there. Thank you. Could you just, when I was on the first meeting earlier, we had quite a representation from within the city and other stakeholders within the community. Could you just briefly summarize who is there that this is really their expertise area? I'll ask, and you can let me know if they're still there. The city? The city had a couple of representatives from the, I'm stumbling with the name of it, the, like, the Clean Water Council was there, and there's a lot of environmental groups that this is their expertise that are helping out with the community part of this, correct?
I don't have their organizations in front of me, so I'm not going to attempt to go off of that.
The city has their own Sustainability Committee, and Ned Dorf, who is on ours, is also on theirs.
That's what I was looking at. This is, this is a committee of experts within the community that are stepping up to help the district is what my point was trying to be that I missed terribly on, so.
Yeah, and I can, for the next update, I can bring some of those organizations to, that the committee members are involved with, as just a brief update for everyone.
Anybody else?
Kale, can you just remind me what specifically you are targeting delivering by the end of the year? What, what are we going to evaluate or hear from the committee at the end of the year?
I don't have the exact specifics of what that'll look like, but the goal is to recommend a process to reach our 2035 goal of fifty percent carbon reduction. And that, that recommendation could involve a number of things, but basically our pathway of getting there.
Can I follow? So I remember you saying that don't expect an inventory of capital projects, right? So I'm just kind of, I'm trying to understand what process means, because I, there is, it's an overloaded term, right? And I'm just trying to prepare for, understand the committee's work between now and then. As we break down, you know, kind of backwards plan from 2030 and forward, is there any amount of detail that you could provide?
Yes, so there will be a capital plan, capital projects included in that plan. So that'll be a portion of it. You know, some examples will be optimization of our current HVAC, our lighting processes involving setbacks and utilizing our building automation system to optimize the energy consumption with that. Trying to think some other examples for you in terms of how can we electrify some of our fossil fuels that we're burning, gas? Other recommendations as far as vehicle usage is another target. Thank you. That is what's coming to mind right now for me. But again, I think benchmark, finding that benchmark too of how much reduction we have to do, that will be able to help guide, you know, how heavy on the capital projects that will be, and how we're currently utilizing our building automation systems to efficiently use the fossil fuels that we currently are using, if that makes sense.
Go ahead.
So it's a similar list that you provided last time when we talked about this, and I'm looking for the first meeting that I went to, there was a quite a robust debate about the baseline and a methodology for assessing progress against baseline. Will kind of, we be able to walk away from your presentation saying, I know where we are and how on an annual basis we'll be able to determine progress against baseline? Because, you know, the, the conversation was, it varies, right? And there are multiple different ways you can determine what our footprint is. So when we look in December, will we have kind of an understanding of the methodologies that you'll deploy to kind of grade the program across time?
Yeah, I think our first workshop really honed in on that. We were trying to understand how the charter was written and understand how, based on how it was written, how we're going to track that, that carbon reduction. And it's also defining exactly that, that carbon reduction, not, you know, fossil fuel consumptions and things like that. It's truly a carbon footprint reduction. So I think it's what the committee has agreed on is how that charter is written. We do have a assumed baseline of measuring that against a particular year. Now, there's factors in that, and we can, we still haven't, you know, written that recommendation. We may, you know, do you take into factors such as global warming? We talked about that last time. Factors that could kind of change that year over year, but that baseline, as of right now, the conversations around measuring against that baseline that was determined by the committee.
Anybody else? Um, I did go to the last meeting. It was very, very interesting. It, I like the fact that we're, as a district, leading in the state on this work. And I like the, the three-question exercise that, is it McKinstry? That they did, I thought that that produced very good discussion, the, the questions that people had and the feedback on that. I'm looking forward to that December report and, and what that, what that looks like, I'm not really sure, but it sounds like it's going to be. I'm looking forward to it. And also, as far as working with the city, with their Sustainability Committee, and these are, we're, we're doing parallel work with them, basically. So any opportunity that we can have to mutually benefit from this work, I think, is, is worth looking into. And I know that just, just a few days ago, I, I was talking to Mayor Genrick, and he was looking for students that might participate in their Sustainability Committee. So, you know, they don't have that right now, and I think they, they really want to have student voice on their Sustainability Committee. So there's a lot of ways that this work can go, and all of it is positive. I'm, I'm just really excited about it. And I think that's all I have. You guys, I know you guys went as well and got to participate in the meeting. Any feedback? Go ahead, Rick.
Yes, I too found it highly energized, to use the term. And there was a lot of good ideas that are, that are going around. I think the, the three metrics that you were talking about, I think they zeroed in on fossil fuels, facilities and fleet equipment, and purchased electricity, or the three, the three things that, that they wanted to focus on. But, but recognizing that there was another list of other areas that could be tackled, but this was the one that the district wanted to, to zero in of these three. So I saw that as a good, you know, a good way to go. I know I asked the question in that meeting about return on investment. Make sure that we were, we were balancing this list of great initiatives with how much does all this cost? And at what point do we start to get a return on the, on the investments that we do? And then what are, what, what would then become discussions of priority of resource allocation? So there was, there was that, there was that concern on my part. But again, I agree with you. It was a great, great meeting, great minds in the room, and everybody's very, very energized and motivated to make, to make this thing happen.
Anybody else? James?
It's interesting, because I was, one of the things I was trying to get to, and, and some of my questions is just that in the charter, we were silent on return on investment, right? The, the charter was to meet the mandate of, you know, twenty thirty, twenty fifty, right? Twenty fifty is supposed to be carbon neutral as state mandate. And I was trying to figure out how we would attack that, because it could be a cost center, right? We, this could not return on investment, and that would be okay, and that we met our mandate, and everything. So it's interesting that you brought that up, because I would be, it would due to frame that presentation to kind of address some of these policy points. I would appreciate it, because I would love to know how to evaluate, you know, and what to care about over the course of the next couple of years.
Yeah, and I think that's the importance of having McKinstry, having gone through this process, you know, with other entities, including school districts, to kind of display those metrics and how we're, we're getting to there. I, I think their involvement's going to be critical. And they have, in these workshops, they've, they've shown examples of that, of how we're going to be able to measure things and why we've selected categories that we have. So I think that's going to, we're going to hit on exactly kind of what you're asking for with that presentation. I did share out, make sure all the board members have them, the two slide decks from the previous workshops. So if you haven't, please reach out if you haven't received those, but there's some good visuals in there and charts and things that, that kind of address probably some of what you're looking for. Those are examples, again, not, not our actual numbers or anything like that. So that's a good source, I think, just to reference for now, until we have that presentation put together. And then just, we are referencing some of the initiatives that the city has as well. And some of that even aligns with some of our benchmarking was a, was a point that was made during our first workshop too. So, yeah, there is some alignment there with the city for sure.
Brian?
Have you heard any other local government groups, whether it's municipalities or school districts, have they reached out to you, asking questions or expressing interest in what we're doing yet?
Not yet. We are engaging in, in some stormwater discussion with the city. I, I think that might be the county as well. That doesn't directly impact carbon with our committee, but I would say that's kind of the only branch off of this that we've had. I haven't had anybody else reach out at this time.
All right, anybody else? Cool. Go ahead.
Kale, I'm, I'm very super excited about the, the projects. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm curious. I'm, I'm probably speaking on behalf of people that are watching us or people at home that has no idea what, what, what we're trying to do here, and I know that you probably have it on the website and so forth. And we're asking a lot of questions, but I think the, the, would it be nice if you could share in, in, in details exactly what we're trying to do here? I know there's carbon free by two thousand thirty or fifty, but what are we doing as a district, the projects that we're doing? This is the beginning stage, or this is pretty much coming up with the, with the proposal, what we're going to select and, and pursue with it? Because I know that, you know, to be carbon free, there, there are so many aspects to do this. I mean, you guys talk about fossil fuel, electric transportation, some parts renewable energy, you know, waste reduction, you know, green buildings, curriculum integrations, and, and then what you're doing now is communicate engagement. But, but if I'm new and I'm sitting here watching us, I, I get very confused to, what are we doing, what are we trying to achieve? What kind of goals are we having in front of us, right? Or, or am I just, you know? So maybe just a little bit more, some details of exactly what we're trying to, what are we doing in terms of steps? How are we going to get there from this point? Exactly what are we doing? What are we involved in? I think that, that will help me, and that will help people that actually are just looking at us, talking about this. It seems like we, we don't have any concrete stuff. We're just kind of talking about it. Or am I missing out on something?
I, I think you're, I think you're right. I, I think it is difficult to understand it at this time, but that's really what, we don't have a recommendation for the board at this time. What these workshops are doing for the committee, it's a learning process with the committee to understand the steps to get to the recommendation. So really, these three workshops, and then between the end of that in October, and then our recommendation in December, that is when the committee will present something tangible for you to evaluate. Now, that's not to say we're not execute energy projects as we speak, which we are, solar at King and Lombardi, optimizing our building automation systems. So we're doing those projects, but what we're doing with McKinstry and, and learning, it's kind of coming up with a plan of, one, how to measure that. Well, one, defining what that goal is. Two, coming up with metrics to measure that, and then three, the recommendations to get to that carbon neutral status, if that makes sense. So really, we haven't shared out that plan yet, so that's probably why it sounds a little confusing, but that will come out of a recommendation from these, these meetings.
Thank you, Kale. Very good. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, that the, the origins of this go back to twenty twenty when the board passed a resolution. On, I'm not sure exactly what the name of it was, but if people want to go and look at, on our website, under Board of Education, there is the very first item under Board of Education is Advisory Committee on Clean Energy. And that, if people go to that, they can see sort of the purpose and the responsibilities and the timeline and meetings, et cetera, kind of what we've done and where we're going. So for someone who's brand new to this, and I'm sure there's plenty of people out there who are like, what, you know, what's going on? It's out there on our website under Board of Education, so they can read up on that and get a, a bigger picture of the why. So. Go ahead, Brian.
The, I'm looking around, and the, the district is focused on energy efficiency and the cost benefit of it. For as long as I've been associated with this district, I remember as a first-year teacher, hearing about, you know, your blinds and the, the lights and everything else that. So we've been doing this as an ongoing basis, and, and I'd say probably the leader in the area as far as our weatherization, our windows, our maintenance, our LED lighting, the automation that you talk about with being able to control the lights and the thermostats and other areas for, for at least twenty years with it. So if someone's watching this now, this is, this is not the start of the district being energy efficient, if for no other reason than we've saved millions of dollars on it going on. So I think there's two separate ideas that are kind of being discussed there, but there's a lot of previous board meetings where we've talked about the energy efficiency and saving money and, and the steps that we've done through referendum projects and just normal upkeep and the, the maintenance with that, so.
And I think that'll, that'll show when we come with our recommendation and we reference baselines and reference our current status. A lot of that information has, has already shown itself, so that'll be part of it.
Very good. Brian?
And to follow up with, one of the issues or one of the challenges that you've had, and you, you talked briefly about it before, is we've taken the low-hanging fruit off, you know, where we don't have windows and leaving lights on all over, you know, we don't have the old-fashioned lights where they're on and off with it. So finding that starting point, I can understand why it's tricky, because, like I said, we've been doing this for twenty years, but before that, but all that low-hanging fruit is gone. So to find where we start measuring from, it's, it's going to be tricky to get those last parts, but we'll be able to do it.
The resolution from twenty twenty is kind of a new, a whole new category of commitment. So, yeah, so, but yeah, that work's been going on for quite a long time, so. Anybody else? Koo, did, are you good, Koo?
Yeah, I'm good. I just want some clarification, just in case that we have new, new residents who participate in this. And, you know, people get confused about it, because we, we, we're talking the way that we talk, because the way that we present ourselves, because we are the experts, and it has been going on since two thousand twenty. But the new people that are actually watching us, they, they will get confused by the fact. So, but I appreciate that Kale and the, the other board members took the time to explain this, so that people that are just now watching us or now involved, that we have a clear picture of what's gone on since two thousand twenty. So thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Kale. All right, we're moving on to under education that will be facilitated by Brian.
And we are having David Johns come up. And we're going to talk about student growth goals first, so. Sorry, both of you are coming up, so.
Good evening, board. I'm happy to be joined by Associate Director of Assessment and Data, Jess Fenn and Hubel, this evening. We have three items for you. Jess and I will be together to share the first two, and then I will call up Dr. Eric Kahn for the third item today. So we'll begin with our presentation of our annual district goals for your review and discussion this evening. The goals are outlined in the memo that flags the significant areas of English and Language Arts, Mathematics, Attendance, Social Emotional Learning as areas that we've set district goals for, as well as each school has set their own goals, really using their own data as a measuring stick for improvement in those areas. Proud to say that this year, all of the schools are using goals set around the same measurement instruments, so that as we talk about the work that happens aggregately throughout all of the schools in our system, we're making efforts toward what you see here as our ambitious set of district goals for this current school year. Couple of ways we could go about this, and I will, will follow your lead. We could talk about this kind of at the level of maybe our academic goals, and then our attendance goals, and then our social emotional goals. We could work through it that way. Mr. Mills, Ms. Ms. Gerlock, however you'd like to approach that. Let's go with that, the project. We'll start with our academic goals of English Language Arts and Mathematics. I shared with you at this board table last month, the challenge and a frustrating challenge that doesn't have us in a position to be able to look at last year's results and really use that as a very clear identifier of where should our goal be this year because of the success we made last year. With that in mind, we did look and with Jess's assistance, looked at a multi-year trend over four years, and really from the post-COVID era on. And we're pleased to see improvements each year in both of these academic areas. While we saw improvements each year, we did not see the narrowing of the gaps among our student groups. So one of the things that you'll see here that you also saw last year in our goals was the identification of a priority performance group. What's really important to know about the priority performance group is that the data leads us to a conclusion that we have served some student groups better than others. The, the fundamental goal is to elevate and accelerate learning for all students, so that all students are learning at high levels. We're making progress with all students. We have a long way to go with our entire student population. But it's also clear that as we work to address students overall, we need to be mindful of some students that we have not served as well. So when these student groups are identified, they're identified as a call to action for the adults, for adults to take a moment to explore their own mindsets about what they believe about students, what they might believe about students that look different than them, what they believe about the futures of all of our students, and what they believe about their own capacity to serve our students. So we have some ambitious goals here, but they're also coupled with some ambitious actions. So we have some ambitious goals here, but they're also coupled with some ambitious actions to address these gaps. And uh, the targets that are represented through the data points in math and English Language Arts are the same targets that we used last year. Just to give you a reference on the five percent increase. And ten percent increase for English Language Arts and eight percent, ten percent for mathematics. Those are uh, those are the same growth targets that we use for last year. And as I shared earlier, it's unfortunate that we can't really look at last year's results. To know what that means year over year. There are a few things we can glean from those, most notably that we are not yet closing the gaps among student populations that that we need to do. So I'll pause there on those two goals and invite your discussion and questions. Okay, moving into our attendance goals for this upcoming year. You got to be present to succeed. We have ambitious goals for students to be successful in school. That requires them to be there. And so we have set some goals again based on a four-year data trajectory that has shown promise and has year over year showed. Increases of the. Upper. Point somethings like point eight, point nine percent increases since the COVID year. Um, showing increases across all student groups, showing increases by grade level year over year. Still showing some some um sluggish uh um. Patterns at the transition grades, especially among our ninth graders. So the most recent look at the data from last year has us very focused on that transition year of ninth grade. We need to double down on our measures uh to ensure that our ninth graders are understanding the importance of school being there on a regular basis. And being successful once they're in the building. So looking at those, um this one, because it's an entire uh student band population, you see in this the smart goal format. That actually gives you the from this to this. And what percent increase that is because we're using different assessments in ELA and math, we can't really show that because there's. Different groups starting at different places, but this is our complete um average daily attendance. Uh, and it shows our target spring crease there. Pause on that attendance data and invite any questions or discussion.
I appreciate this, and I think Laura and I last year had an opportunity to go to our task force set up by the city on attendance. Um, and I make became very clear that this is a very complex problem. Um, and I'm wondering if you could kind of articulate some of the interventions or plan. Associated with this goal of increasing two to five percent.
Yeah, thank you for the question. A little bit of improvement in average daily attendance requires a big lift. Um, these these numbers, while they look, while they represented as the smallest increases of any other goal in our set of goals. Um, it's pretty significant when you move a student population as large as ours, a couple percentage points. Um, to that end, um and speaking to the transition grades that I spoke about. Um, our People Services Team has been organizing uh parent. Um, and caregiver and guardian events. Um, that's really kind of like the. The owner's manual for a new sixth grader, the owner's manual for a new ninth grader to really help. Um, parents and families understand uh what it means to be a student at this really important. Age of life and grade in their academic career. Um, and so those have been uh publicized and promoted widely and are really focused on giving parents an understanding of. This is what's missed when your student isn't attending. Sometimes that that isn't often. That isn't often communicated, and so it's it's the difference between missing a day of school and missing a day that I now know what happens in your school. And that makes a huge difference to us. We've also um tightened up our use of a sequence of notifications that begins when a student misses five days. It changes as it moves into ten, as a student moves into ten and beyond. And instead of the outreach being language that's punitive, accusatory. Um, it's outreach that lends a supportive hand and really reaches out and tries to identify what is the barrier. Um, what can we do uh to be a partner in this? And and all along, again, reinforcing the the importance of being at school. A a really um aspire, a a really um. Promising partnership uh that is multi-pronged um with uh. The Oneida Nation is um partnering with them on their focus on student attendance and. Uh, parent and caregiver education about the importance and value of school. Um, that's a good example of when we talk about what actions will we be taking to achieve these goals? That there's no goal represented here that can solely be the work of of teachers in classrooms in in Green Bay area public schools. So our partners um in Oneida are currently engaged in a large scale. Um, public awareness campaign about the importance of attendance and the linkage of attendance and reading success. And so that's the two-pronged approach approach that a year ago we wouldn't have been able to speak to and now is um. Now is incredibly promising.
I think one of the key, I I think of all the areas on here, attendance is obviously going to be the. The thing that drives the other. The goals on there because it's not only just the lessons that you're missing out, but the. Social emotional learning, you're not going to make the connections with those staff members, whether it's your teacher or if it's a food service worker, if it's one of our facility staff. That helps the kids feel connected to it. They're not going to be finding out, you know, the excitement of. Whatever is at or whatever other extracurricular events are taking place if they're not there for that time. Um, do you think that? Our attendance is also positively impacted. By the different types of programs that we offer within this district, when I'm looking at Catherine Johnson, NEW School of Innovation. Some of some of our programs that aren't our traditional schools. Is there a way that we can measure that we've seen increase in those specific programs as well as the years gone on?
Yeah, I I'm intrigued by that idea. Um, I think um obviously we see attendance um. Typically begin at a at a respectively very high level as students are younger and then as as students start to get older, that changes. Um, you I you you named a couple of um special programs and innovative programs within our district that I think. Are worth digging into and examining and and really exploring, like, what's the pull? What's the draw? What is what is the? The ratio of adults to students? What is learning like? What are those first ten minutes of the day when you walk in the door? How are students feeling welcomed and embraced in a learning community? Um, and uh, yeah, thank you for naming that because I I think there are some practices that are worth. Not only identifying, but then multiplying.
I think the board recognized when they called out personalized pathways as a strategic priority. Ten years ago. That we need to differentiate for our students because not every student is successful in a comprehensive high school. So to ask that question, I I would say you are spot on. When you think of all of the offerings that Green Bay Area Public School District has in compared to comparison to our neighbors. It's one of the things that makes our district so attractive. And I would say it definitely increases our student attendance. You could just take the academy for example. When we started that eight years ago, those kids were on path to not graduate. To stop attending. And then we developed a program specifically to keep them engaged, and it's worked. Thank you for the question.
I think the other thing that we need to look at, and this is something I brought up before, is. The movement of students within our district and then also the movement of students outside of our district and coming in. So. When we look at some of the assessments, you know, especially I'm I'm assuming ELA and math, it's going to be off the forward exam is. Kind of the snapshot with it because it's. It's the one that we use. The percentage of our students that. Leave and come back or leave within our district is got to be significant. If I remember. I use the numbers I had twelve or thirteen years ago when I taught in the district that it was thirty to forty percent turnover at one of our middle schools. And I'm sure that that has just continued to increase, so. I think it's important for us as a board, when we look at these things, to continue to look at. The options that we're providing there. I've I've talked about community school models and and different areas that we can use to. Help make it as easy as possible for our families to stay within their buildings when they can and to make sure there is welcome. In our buildings when they come and go from within the district. It's just, it's it's the nature of public education. Of. Figuring out how we can do it, and I think we're doing a good job. I want us to continue to look at that as well with it, so. So if I could get the percentage, if there's any way to measure how many students start in our buildings and how many leave throughout, that would be. Wonderful. I don't know if that's. Such a moving area of of whether we can or not, but I think it's a. I'm not sure if the rest of the board or the community recognizes how significant that plays into. And and to see the number of students that just. Move throughout, so.
Yeah, we can absolutely get that for you.
Any other question? Koo, any questions? Are you good? Keep trying to look back to see if I'm seeing a hand raised. You're good? Okay. So we can move on to the next part.
You uh, you mentioned. You mentioned several times in your comments um related to attendance, this notion of um feeling like. You have a place in your school. Last year, we presented a social emotional learning goal that was all about um students simply completing a survey. Uh, we had no data to actually ground a social emotional learning goal in until we made use of. An a nationwide normed uh survey called Panorama. And we had um over ninety-six percent of our third through twelfth grade students participate in that survey. Um, I think we had a count of something like eight, almost eight thousand students weighed in on questions like. What is your sense of belonging in your school? And so we did a survey administration in the fall and another in the spring. It gave us a data trajectory to look at for areas um. For growth and improvement. So those are identified here in the form of two goals. Um, it's a different set of survey questions. It's written developmentally appropriate for third through fifth graders and then a different set through the for the older students. And that's why you see two different data sets there. So among our third through fifth graders. Um, we recognize that emotional composure uh was our oper- emotional regulation, excuse me. Was our opportunity to really uh lean into our students and support them through uh moments where um. The struggle is real for them um and what it takes for them to um. Process and understand that experience and then be able to to move forward. This survey um is based on questions that are asked of students. So this is not an adult. Weighing in on what they believe a student's emotional regulation is. It's a series of questions. That are considered favorable or unfavorable responses. And so. Looking at the favorable responses, then that was an area where we want to see an increase um in students with emotional regulation. Here's where we also noticed that our data was telling us uh our First Nations students. Um, had the greatest gaps uh between um themselves as a student group and the rest of and the rest of our students. Um, and that was affirmed really in working with Oneida, especially uh around um. Some anecdotal uh conversations around what what they're hearing from students as they as they experience life in school. Secondary grades, we shifted to that sense of belonging. So a series of questions were asked of students around. Um, the way that they felt valued at their schools, the way that they felt teachers understood who they were as a person. Um, the way that they were treated by other students. And so that set of questions put together the uh sense of sense of belonging profile. And that is our target area for growth for our six through twelve students. James?
Okay, thank you. I just, I'm running the list now, and now that you've been through all of the different sections of this um, these goals. Um, the academic. Measurements, we have a problem because DPI went and changed the. The breadth of the segments, right, and the names of the segments. Did they not provide any guidance as to how to norm this year's data against a trend line that we've been keeping forever?
We don't have any, they they're recommending that we consider this a fresh start, and there will not be translations. To former scores. So where we had set the goals was looking at. Growth we've made and what is our trend of growth, and we want to continue to make and stretch that growth that we've had in the past.
Andrew?
So just because we're told by a a third party that they don't have a direct translation for us, can we make our own? Data dive efforts to try to to try to do that, and if. If we really can't because they're too different, it's okay to tell me that, but are there are there things we can try to do?
So what they have, they've done is they've completely rewritten the scoring for ELA and math. It used to be. Uh, score set on a hundreds and a score, and now it's a score set in a thousand set. Uh, we can look at the contents of how our students are doing on the different topics assessed and standards assessed. Uh, and move forward with where we're seeing currently versus maybe where we had seen trends in the past years. But we would really look to our internal measures of how our students were doing on those standards. And how they're performing this year, and we would also tie that with our interim assessments, which are written to to. Get uh to gauge the proficiency on those standards. And that's sort of our marker across the year now to know that we're making progress toward grade level, which would then translate to what they're doing on the test, the state tests as well.
We're desperate to get to the bottom of that question that you asked. Um, uh, this, we are, we are, we are entering entering this year. Motivated and energized by new approaches to how our students will learn to read. Uh, new approaches in um really referencing the standards when we talk about what does a grade level experience look like? And so um in our, in our, in our next discussion topic. Um, we can share a little bit more about some of those places we can mine for those questions that you asked about Mr. Becker, but that is um. That is the fuel for the fire, and we need to find it.
I I think part of it is also. As a board member, that snapshot is not as important to me as what we are seeing continuously take place. So. You later on, you're going to be talking about some other progress that we've made, so. While I understand the the root of that question, and that is on the school report card. It's a one time, you know, this, this is an opportunity to really look into what was that test covering? And how much, how much are we weighing the test versus all of our other assessments that give us? A true look at the student on there, so. James?
I'm trying to use the card system. So. So. Stand that this is a DPI report card issue. My concern is that we've established district goals against a soft slash non-existent baseline. Um, and I'm, I don't understand how a couple of year rolling average. Replaces uh last year baseline if. Uh, everything that you just said is so different. I don't know how a rolling couple of year average. Supplants and makes any sense either, so.
And the, there was not an average on the achievement scores. It was on the growth that we've made between years. That's what we looked at.
Any other questions on this part?
I may get this wrong in the way I'm talking about math and percentages, but when we're talking. I mean, we are, we are definitely calling out certain groups. As as targeted groups for improvement because of this gap that exists. I I first want to make sure that. We we understand that because of the the total of certain groups, total population, that. It percent, the the value of one person in that group that has smaller numbers is higher. So when failure occurs with with one person in a group that has seven percent of the population. It it registers mightily as compared to that same total number of failure that occurs with. Larger populated groups. So it gets called out and 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 Mr. Mr. Johns, he nailed it by saying that. We've got to not jump to the wrong conclusions about discounting entire groups of people. Because of what is stated in this document. We we have to be mindful of that. Because you know that the the superficial amongst us will only look at this and say and draw some conclusions about resource allocation. Um, well, if all of that group is doing this badly, how much money do we really need to be putting towards them because they'll never get it? Attendance um is focused on another group and um. How much effort do we put on that? So we have to be careful of throwing percentages out. And not understanding the scope and size and then drawing irrational conclusions based on the callouts that are made by this document. That's it.
Koo.
First of all, I think. The the some of the strategies that was discussed or shared with us tonight, I want to. Congratulate Dr. Johns and Dr. Khan's, your your team for. Doing a fantastic job when when it comes to putting these strategies together. I just love the fact. That we're going to create a support environment for academic, for attendance. We are now engaged in the community. And I think you mentioned attendance and we talked about the First Nations. You are bringing on board. An individual that could relate to the culture that lived the culture has been part of it. So I'm very proud to hear that. And that individual in our district, I think according to your strategy, will address the barriers. Of why some of these students didn't get the kind of achievement that we we. Thought they should be on academic standards or even attendance. And 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 they'll have a safe space because we care about these individuals, our students. We have surveys out and and the positive role models that that we are creating through building leadership. I thought these are on the money and it's it's so positive and I'm excited about that for the coming years. But to add on top of. What Mr. Crossen is saying. I think I'm a little bit on the fence when we identify. When we actually put it out there in public, a certain group. Often of students identify to a certain ethnicities or certain group, I think there. There are some risks there. And I think that. You guys, we've done a wonderful job and identified this. Would it be wonderful to keep this within the district and we could strategize? And 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 really develop plans to improve these areas without actually putting on paper and put it out there. In the public spare. I just think that I'm a little bit on the fence on on actually putting that out there.
Whenever we cite goals, and I assume that we're we're doing the same thing with our teachers, we want them to be measurable, attainable. Have timely, all of that part. So when we're looking at. Cells of data on here where it's broken down by what DPI has on it, that allows us to be targeted with it. I understand what you're saying with it. I think that this is just one of those opportunities to make sure that it's it's a smart goal that. We're not throwing. All our resources that, you know, that it's measurable on there. And I think I'm getting that that's also part of the intent on that is so we can. See where we're targeted towards groups that. It's it's measurable. That's how the state breaks it down. Am I correct on that?
Yes, absolutely. It's measurable and it's in response to. Decades of those gaps widening. I think that we would be in a different place from a strategy standpoint if we could point to some era in our history and say. Something happened here because the gaps closed. There is no evidence that the gaps have closed and then reopened. The evidence is only showing that they are widening. And that's really where the sense of urgency is around now. Naming where we have served students the least. And then mobilizing and supporting and building capacity. To respond to that. And I'm telling you, they're ready and energized to do that.
And and that's not a Green Bay approach. That's. Throughout education that we're we're not going out on a limb saying we're focusing on certain. Populations or certain groups. This is something that takes place in most districts throughout the state, if not through the country, correct?
Certainly, it's a practice and continuous improvement among larger districts that have, although the numbers aren't equal. Measurable populations of a diverse student body.
I I just want to add that what I'm saying is that it's it's, I'm not saying the 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 strategy or or how we. Come up with the process to deal with these issues are not. Sufficient. I think the ideas are fantastic. I think we're gonna. Address it properly according to our capacity to do so. But my concern is just the idea that that we we have a public out there. That when we actually put these groups out there, I I think it's just a more like adding fuel to the fire. To the stereotypical misconceptions about a certain group of people. That's just what I'm saying that do we as a district has the ability? To kind of. Shade that or at least just quote that. Even though we know that those are the target groups. Instead of, you know, putting it out there completely that this group is this way, that group is that way, and we have to deal with it. That that's what I'm saying.
James.
Dr. Johns. To address Koo's point, the demographically segmented data. Of achievement is available on Wise Dash, right? So this is not us proactively making available to the public. This demographic data, it's actually putting forth a plan to address data and information that is available to the public. And therefore, we're making our plans and strategies interventions sensitive to what is already out there.
That's correct, as well as the composite school report card, which identifies a performance. A group of students within the school setting that has had the greatest gap. And over how many years has that gap either grown or closed? So the the mindset around identifying a student group is really cooked into the report card approach and the and the Wise Dash views.
Looks like we are set with that. Did you want to? Anything else to add to this one?
I'll just touch on the focused actions because the 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 important question. Is always ambitious goals. Appreciate them. How are you going to meet or exceed them? And of course, this is a, this is a high level look at. What really are some focus strategies that we're investing precious, precious teacher time, precious dollars. In in order to achieve or exceed these goals. Focus throughout the system on equitable instruction and not leaving that to chance that. On one side of a hallway, somebody thinks that means this. And on another side of the hallway, somebody else thinks it means this. Equitable instruction at its core is grade level engaging, affirming and meaningful. And there's there's deeper definitions behind that. That get to even things like a sense of belonging, even though these goals are represented separate from each other. There is a, there is a tie that binds them together in terms of the the quality of the lessons that our students walk into every classroom every day to experience. Lifting up their sense of belonging, lifting up their sense of efficacy and capacity. Because last time they got this on something and now they've. As a board, you have wisely adopted and selected and invested our public's dollars. In high quality English language arts and math instructional materials throughout our entire system. And so this is the year, especially with reading K through eight, where we're focusing on. The use of those as instructional materials in the classroom, the understanding of them, the ways they're best suited to to be. Used with students in alignment with the science of reading. And then ultimately celebrating the results that we get out of our teachers doing amazing work using high quality instructional materials. Technology and other significant investment that you've made around how our teachers gather evidence of students learning. How they can have efficiencies when they sit with their teaching partners and talk about the growth of our students. And then ultimately, how our students can even get the snapshot of of how they're learning and growing as well as their parents. And then, of course, these responses to student needs. This is one that we're continuing to focus on. It came up in the attendance conversation. How are we responding when our students aren't getting to school? That's not necessarily about equitable instruction, instructional materials. That's about. What team is mobilized? And when do we get the data early enough to be able to respond? So that's really on a high level, our focused actions that are, we've invested in throughout the system. It looks a little bit different at different levels of the organization. But by and large, this is really our our organizing center to achieve these goals.
James.
So to draw everyone's attention, I'm going to reference bullet point number three, using technology to gather, monitor and analyze evidence of student learning. I agree that we've spent a good bit of money in providing these systems. How is? I struggle with our inability to stay close to those numbers, right? We get no assessments done annually and that, you know, report cards. But the interval between data that we get to evaluate is very, very long, right? So you have technology that allows you to monitor and to assess kind of that ongoing compliance to program. And to strategy. How can we get access to summative executive level kind of commentary out of that monitoring program so that we can stay? To that data so that we can sleep at night, that things are going in the right direction versus. You know, waiting with bated breath for the report card to come out and hope that it's better than last year. And so, I mean, I I would love to be able to see that on interval. And we tried to establish some of that last year, but with. Changes in the learning organization, I would love to re-invite that process in rigor.
Appreciate the question and the the. Almost everything that's on here can read at the classroom level and can also read at the system level. And so. On one hand, there's tremendous value to the classroom teacher using. The canvas interface to be able to get information real time to make decisions about what's the lesson going to be like tomorrow. The other advantage of that is, to your point, to be able to provide. Larger scale snapshots of progress toward these ambitious goals that we've set. So we so we know we're playing a winning game. In the memo that preceded these goals, I flagged a couple of months that we've already. Pre-planned on the board schedule to be able to provide you some of those interim updates that some of our newer investments in technology are going to be able to give us those snapshots you're talking about. We'll focus in January on elementary reading and we'll focus in March. On secondary achievement using the interim assessments through Canvas and Mastery Connect. So a couple of early opportunities there. And again, my hope is we build more of a habit of this.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And that's a good segue into our systematic assessment calendar update.
Perfect. So linked for your review in the agenda is the memo explaining this year's systemic assessment calendar. This calendar will provide you a view of what the state and the district universally administered assessments are. It's very similar to what we've had in the past. Update to the elementary calendar would be the changeover of the. New screener for foundational literacy. And also the Lexia Core Five, that would be our interim data that would be progress monitoring across the year for early literacy skills. As well as vocabulary comprehension, all that all the way up through fifth grade. Secondary assessment calendar looks very similar to the past as well. We gathered teacher feedback for interim assessment administration, though, and adjusted some of the. Dates on those to match the feedback that we received from teachers. As well as teacher teams of curriculum chairs or content leads did get together to review the interim assessments. And then use the the vetted Mastery Connect databanks to update those assessments as well, but. Other than that, the calendars are very similar to what we had in the past.
And this was, this has been an ongoing thing with as far as making sure that everything is targeted, that we're using teacher time wisely and. This continues to be done with collaboration of different groups, including our educators and within, so. Thank you. Andrew.
Thank you. So we had. We had spent some time on trying to reduce and did reduce the number of. Assessments. Are we, are we still fewer than we were before that point, either in number or in? In time? And then I guess the second part of this would be. How is? How is teacher and staff support for these? Across the board, not not just the ones that not just the teachers that maybe find their way onto committees more often, but also your everyday. Everyday folks who maybe don't. Don't go on a lot of committees but live by the same things that we're going to pass here.
The first part of your question about an overall reduction in number of assessments. I I became aware of that early as I started in this role last year. What we're presenting you in this look is. No more, no less than what we presented last year, but I want to, I want to just, I want to. Speak to a difference between what we're sharing in terms of the things that are required assessments, which is. Two thirds of the table for each grade level, state required assessments. We're making use of, again, some of these efficiencies in the way that technology can help really zero in on where a student's performance level is in ways that. Are more reliable than having every teacher sit down with a student. And engage in a back and forth, reading passage and conversation. And so while the number of assessments is the same, the teacher time that is. Connected with gathering the information that the assessment would gather is is monumentally reduced. These new tools and techniques that we're we're using. I I did some calculations around a third grade example, a third grade teacher would have invested. And these are investments. These, it's important to know where our students are in their reading level. There's just some more sophisticated ways that we can do it now. Using technology and using things that our kids are actually quite familiar with and quite fluent with. The the very measures we would have used last year would have taken five hundred minutes in a typical third grade classroom times three times a year. The same information can be gathered in a seventy-five minute interval, done three times a year. In terms of reading level and twenty of those seventy-five minutes are actually time that's cooked in. To the literacy lesson itself where a student is doing some independent work with their Lexia program. So. Mindful of the number, absolutely, but also mindful of. How do we build efficiencies in the ways that we're gathering the really important information to act on?
We often focus on students are needing the most help on that. These assessments are also. Allowing us to find the students that are also achieving highly on that and. Differentiate for them as well and provide those opportunities and the staff are able to recognize that and build on that as well, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Because it's universally administered, we can see where differentiated or differentiation is needed at all sides, at all sides. And then also, Andrew, to your question about the feedback piece, our department chairs or content leads do take. Our recommendations back to their department meetings at the buildings. And then they serve to to flow that information back to our curriculum coordinators and back in. Or the department chairs take the taken survey could have on behalf of their feedback that they're getting from their team.
Koo, do you have any questions?
I'm actually good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. And I believe Dr. Khan is coming.
Thank you, Jess. Call Dr. Eric Khan to join me. He will be the only doctor on this side of the table, by the way. Public section. I do not have a doctorate degree.
So, good evening, although we've just started the current school year, we're already looking ahead to the 2025-26 school year. The annual course offering updates that we present to you reflect the district's priority of providing students the opportunity to personalize their academic pathways. For their post-secondary goals. The offerings we present to the board annually include all secondary courses. The schools at which each course is offered, the grade levels in which students can take the courses, the course length and the credits earned. For this year, you'll notice some general areas of change in the detailed list of changes in the board memo. First, we have updates to dual credit course. First, we have updates to dual credit courses, which reflect the changes with our partnering colleges. Second, you'll see updates to the multilingual learner program courses that are part of the program's restructure in order to provide support to students based on their academic backgrounds. And third, you'll see the renaming of some social studies courses to better reflect the time periods being studied in those courses. Just as a note, these courses are the ones that we offer in the district. Whether a course runs is based on a variety of factors, including student interest, available faculty with the necessary credentials and facilities. Additionally, we are continually reviewing our course offerings in response to lower student enrollment, as well as the, our desire to maintain our robust offerings. We are going to be reviewing courses for potentially offering in every other year rotation. This will allow students to plan their course requests more strategically, as well as provide efficiency in our staffing and scheduling processes. And then finally, upon approval of the course offerings by the board, we will update all related supporting materials to reflect those changes. These materials are provided to students, staff, and families through the Academic Planning Guiding Course Book in October. I'm happy to answer questions.
James.
Good evening. Thanks for coming up and providing some context for the subject. You were not a party to the conversation, neither of you were. So I, I do not expect you to understand the answer to this. But listed amongst your description of how we're managing courses was not a strategy to develop online versions of some of the courses, right? You described going to every other year and it's based on enrollment and effective use of teacher time. At one point last year, there was a strategy to use our technology. And the reason why we moved to the technology to develop a inventory of courses to be expanded to near coverage of all high school coverage, uh, high school of courses available via Canvas online. I would appreciate at some point a opportunity to kind of review that strategy and where you are and kind of make sure that that was not lost in transition, that we remain dedicated to expanding our courses offered across the district based on the interest across the district in a course, not at a particular building.
I, I want to add to that as well. I think one of the things that's most attractive about this district is the availability of classes. And if a student at Preble wants to take sign language and it's only offered at Southwest, we need to figure out a way to do that. Or if a student is looking at the other, every other option, and if it was at East and for some reason their family moved and they transferred to Preble, we still need to make sure that we can figure out how that works well with them. I think it could help draw students into the district, help provide better options for our students within. So I know James and I had talked about this when we both were running about how we increase participation in a lot of things, whether it's athletics or academics and activities with that of building more of a, I don't know, James, would be fair to say like a citywide campus almost, but those availability and options for students throughout. And I think it would help the numbers. We also recognize that, well, I recognize that when NWCC is not offering a class, that's because they also have declining enrollment, just because of the aging of the, the population and, and the numbers that we have throughout the area with it. So, James?
Yeah. So I, I recognize that we had those conversations. My, my position on this is more pragmatic. We spent a lot of money during COVID on technology resources, and it should not have been put in place to address one pandemic and that we can leverage that foundational spend to address certain things where we know it's a very competitive market for teachers. And we've struggled with staffing and making sure that these core course offerings are available. So as grand and ambitious as a citywide campus is, I'm approaching this as we know we have problems and we spent a lot of money on systems that can address the problems. I just want to make sure that the project and the operationalization of that actually gets carried out and that we're able to deliver value to the district, right? So I'm, I'm very interested in this, um, um, maybe for different reasons, but very, very.
Cool. Do you have any question?
No, I, I'm actually, uh, I'm actually good on this topic for now.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to transition to operations and that will be facilitated by Rick Crossen.
Okay. We have one agenda item to discuss and that's job description updates. Mike Freeze will join us at the table.
I can start with the first one. Mr. Crossen, that's okay with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The first job description that we have for board consideration is the superintendent of schools and learning. This job description is an update from the existing job description where it takes the old standards off and brings the 10 new administrative standards forward.
Hey, is there any conversation, any discussion on this particular job description? Andrew?
So there's, um, there's a lot going on here and I get that it's, it's written to, um, it's written to a new set of standards, but could you, could you give a, an overview of a, like the, a sense of how this is different? I mean, we could, you know, we could go through, there's, there's so many bullet points going on, but like, I guess in the, if you were to summarize, like, how is this different? Because I'm assuming this puts a little bit different what we're looking for or what you're, what is being suggested that we look for. It's not just boilerplate replacing things that are exactly the same with the new wording. There's, there's more to it. So could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes. Um, the, these literally are the new administrative standards. They were reviewed within the past five years at the state level. And they take into account changes in education. So the language, for example, in the, the first standard in the past was strategic leadership and district culture. They've modified that one to be called now mission, vision, and core values. And what you'll find under that, the new language is effective educational leaders develop, advocate, and enact a shared mission, vision, and core values of high quality education, academic success, and well-being of each student. And then you'll see the indicators below, um, which you referenced in the, the bullets. There are 10 standards now. A little bit more culturally sensitive.
Andrew, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I, I guess my, my question is more, you know, we have, you know, there's about 80, 80 or so bullet points, which is, which is very detailed. So I'm just, you know, in the process of looking at this and wanting to, you know, with any changes that we may or may not make, wanting to recognize the state standards, but also focus on what's important to us in the, the job description. So I see there is, there is a bit more of a mention of culturally informed practices, which is, which is good. It seems that there's more of a, probably more of a, more of a theme of collaborative leadership in here. Shared distributed leadership seems to be a theme that comes in here a, a bit more. Engagement as its own, as its own standard is, is good. And I'm assuming probably district and school improvement and operations and may always there, but they were embedded elsewhere. So I'm just wondering if, again, on a broader, you know, more thematic level, uh, is there anything else? Or does that pretty much cover it?
I think you said it better than I did, Mr. Becker.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on that? Yes.
I just have a, a specific question about the very first one. I, I did follow the review, the, the two places where this originated. And I find that most of it is word for word from the statute or the standards. But something that I don't understand, for the first one, I believe there are seven bullet points. And every one of them, except one, uses the term moral imperative. But I don't find that in the model from which this was taken. And I wonder who has, um, who determines what this moral imperative is and why it's there in everyone?
Yes. Um, what you see in the red is from WASB, which I assumed was word for word from the state administrative standards, but you're saying it isn't.
I did not see the term moral imperative anywhere. Um, I, I had no idea. The two, uh, and, and I'm going to ask Laura to help me with this because she's the one who guided me. The two sources that we were directed to at the end of the job description, neither one is WASB, correct?
That's, that's correct, but my notes from the WASB standards reference those, so I assumed it was word for word.
I, I just wonder, you know, what, um, what the moral imperative is and, um, you know, I, I, it just seems it's, it's used so often and I wonder what it's supposed to mean.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, observations? Yes, James?
So that I just leave the meeting with clarity. There are two sources and there were notes and some edits that are outside of the sources directly to the job description, right? Based on interactions with WASB and others. Okay. So I, I can't go back and make sure that, um, it feels like, well, can you confirm that it is a superset that all of the bullet points from the sources identified are there? There may be additions some to those, but everything in the standards are covered.
Yes, I will do that. Um, the document I used was the superintendent evaluation framework that the board had purchased last year.
Okay. Anything else with this particular job description? Yes.
I don't know a lot about job descriptions. This might be a kind of a silly question, but when a job description is updated like this, is there any, um, any attention given to how things, how these things will be measured? Or is that not, you, you create the job description and then later on you go by and, and say now, how are we going to measure that? Is that how it works, Mike?
I'd offer that it, it varies based on the role because the state has outlined particular evaluation frameworks for some employees and then left it to the employer for other employees. So we certainly would say that a standards-based profession like superintendent or educator or principal, those, those do walk hand in hand. There's a crosswalk between the standards, you know, and the evaluation part. So there's going to be alignment and we, we've updated these job descriptions to better reflect that as opposed to just daily operational things. Um, so that's a kind of a non-answer, but sort of it's the best answer I can provide you right now relative to kind of how that's set up for the non-standards-based positions in the district that don't have state level evaluation requirements. We have to establish our own and then we apply that evaluation process based on the expectations of the job, but keeping it aligned with district mission, vision, values as well.
James?
Oh, to clarify, a job description is a, a listing of educational experiences, competencies, skills, and things that you're looking for in order to, when you're trying to select someone. There's an evaluation framework that uses a job description, but it's a different instrument that you would actually evaluate. So it would be odd to put like key performance indicators or goals inside of a job description, right? So in, in a situation like this, you would expect, and we have an evaluation framework that we're working through that, that is used to evaluate the, the superintendent select against that, using the job description to help us create that evaluation.
Any other comments? Yes, Laura?
I just want to remind everybody, maybe I don't need to do this, but we will be voting on this at some point. Uh, the, the board has to vote on this job description, just like the other ones. So.
I, I have one comment regarding this, this document. I have seen key performance indicators listed in job descriptions. I've written a, a number of them. At some point, if there is, if there are specific needs, specific requirements that are outlined in the strategic plan that want or that warrant specific focus, and if you're looking for, excuse me, skill sets to bring in or, or to, to, to enhance with, with, with the person occupying this position, then KPIs are, are very much appropriate. I, this, this is good in the sense that it's, it's all encompassing. It's, it's, it is very general. And it, it has yet to lend itself to greater quantification of, of results. And so that's, that's something that, you're right, this, that could be an addendum to a job description, or it could be part of the job description depending on the urgency or criticality of, of the need. So it's just something that we have to be mindful of as we, as we go forward and, and ultimately when we do vote on this. Yes, James?
Yeah. To your, to your point, I think the decision that the board has in front of it is what's the scope of the job description? Because when I hear you, I would think absolutely if we expected this job description to be updated to reflect a current plan that's in place, 100% I would bake those KPIs into the job description. I approach this like I've approached others where there is a consistent job description that has a duration beyond a, a proposed plan that you want to sit on top of those plans. And then you would have evaluation addendums or, or annual evaluation frameworks that would then be sensitive to the plan that you're executing, right? And that you're wanting the superintendent to, so, so I'm okay with either, right? I think it's just our decision when we look at this, what type of job description do we want? It's been my experience that you are looking for these consistent job descriptions that could live years out until there's a substantial change in requirements, but I, I might have misinterpreted that.
I'm going to say yes and, um, because I believe that a great dialogue that we could have going forward is, I'm going to frame it as the template for district job descriptions. Should it be reviewed and maybe changed to reflect a new normal for some classifications possibly? Because it also, it not only on the supervision evaluation side, a new normal for some classifications possibly, because, um, it also, it not only on the supervision evaluation side, but it also appeals to a potential candidate to understand. So you have the stuff that's being described, but what's it really look like? What is this job in reality? And sometimes those CPIs really help or extra KPIs really clarify for folks who might be interested, oh, I can envision what this job actually is, right? Instead of us making jokes about the last line saying other duties as assigned all the time. Would people to better understand the breakdown of the expectations and then we can say, well, we knew going in, this is what this was, right? So, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Brian?
Buy you a little time here, Lynn, because you got it. My skill set is not in what you two are talking about. Like, I I don't have that experience with it. As I'm looking on Ed Week and I'm looking at superintendent positions just to see what other groups have as far as job descriptions. There's very few key indicator, you know, the the measurements that you were talking about. So yeah, I'm interested in seeing how we do that without taking away from the uniqueness that is working in an educational setting that back to a lot of times, I'm I'm not saying I'm or against anything, I'm just intrigued by the concept of how do we do that? When I don't see it happening very often in other spots, but it's definitely i- within superintendent positions from my 30-second search now. How we can navigate that, so just curious with it.
James?
So in in practical matters, do we want a job description that changes at the rate the standards change at DPI? Right? Because that that is like every 10 years, every 15 years. Or do we want to subordinate the creation of a job description to strategic planning? Right? Because that's where you get your KPIs and everything from. And the rate of change for the job description will be much, much more frequent, right? And so when you're looking, I imagine and I'm biased to say it will be hard over time to always synchronize the two. Right? And and remember across boards that we change the, um, the strategic plan. We have to go update the job description because the KPIs are now stale, right? And so when you're looking at maintaining the document, probably easier potentially to addend a job description with a plan's KPIs versus create and bake them into a job description. That's why I looked at this and said, yeah, i- it's standard-based, I'm okay with it.
Yes.
I would like to thank my colleagues. I would like to thank Brian for giving me time to write my idea down. And I want to thank James for asking the question. Look at, verify that. Isn't that what I said? James asked the question that I wanted to ask. It with the relationship between the job description and strategic planning. That's what it was, so you did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Right.
The potential of boards changing, and and I was concerned, James, that you were going to talk about the the speed and agility that DPI has on that, that my concern would be the potential of boards changing and and this isn't what you're proposing of not necessarily utilizing the DPI standards in there too, that we need to make sure we do both with it. That I could envision a a board also and changing our performance indicators that may or may not have anything to do with the standards that DPI sets. So it it's going to be a fine line we walk and hopefully we continue to address and boards in the future do as well, so.
Laura?
Also, I'd like to just give a thought to this job description being a invitation to applicants for that job. How how will, uh, future candidates look at it? I would think that a a standard job description like we're proposing, um, with the state, uh, standards would give a good indicator for anyone who'd like to apply for that position. Whereas, um, other asks in that might be something that would would potentially put off applications. Just want to throw that out there.
Comment, any additional comments? Okay, let's move on to the next job description.
Maybe I can cluster a few of them for you. One of, uh, the the first one, um, actually has to be a standalone, I guess. Site director for after-school, um, that was one that had been recently updated in the spring. But then, um, uh, Board Trustee Lyerly had asked us during the, um, federal or Fair Labor Standards Act changeover, was the job description accurate? We did take a look and then we talked with the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club and just have reflected that change. So that's pretty minor overall, but reflecting that that piece that it would be non-exempt and then allowing for a broader range of candidates through the prerequisite, uh, education needed. We also then, um, bringing forward on the heels of, um, updating I remember during the clerical compensation study, there had been a general clerical secretary job description and then addendums for all the special positions. The results of that allowed us to say, wait a second, let's have actual job descriptions for roles as defined by their their work. And so we have the library media assistant, the office assistant, the admin assistant one, and admin assistant one attendance that are reflective of those previous addendums now turned into actual job descriptions. So, um, the school supervisors and the employees that have participated in the process, um, over the past few years, their input then led to these results and the directors at the district level helped confirm that they were accurate. And so that's what the updates are for those. The middle and high school athletics activities director, uh, job description had not been updated, um, uh, in a little while. So, uh, we took a look at that, or you might recall in previous months, you had approved updates to the principal as well as the associate principal. This is the, uh, the other member of the admin team that exists at our our middle and high schools, and so that one is reflected there.
Right?
This is a group I work with very closely, um, through some responsibilities I have as an official. And as a sports official and it if I did a little word search in there and I found the word officials once as far as scheduling officials right after transportation. Our athletic directors and activity directors do a really fantastic job of communicating, promoting and managing sports officials in there. And if there is a way that we can stress that a little bit more, I think it's a key part that people may not recognize and maybe I'll have some ideas of phrasing that. But the amount of work that they go through to get that coordinated is is significant and a valuable part to keeping high school and middle school athletics going. And if there's a way we can help encourage recruitment or something with that, I think it would help drastically and recognizing that the ADs are probably the best for that is significant. So I can come up with some wording if you would like and make it as a motion at the next one, but wanted to share that.
Andrew?
Yes, so a couple of, couple of things I'd like more information on. First of all, a lot of work and effort historically went into elevating the activities side of what was always called the athletics director. And so we have a, we had a title then that was activities director, understanding that it was encompassing of athletics. And and maybe because of the the moving parts to coordinate athletics may be the majority of it. That's, uh, not really in much dispute. But here we're, you know, so we're we're putting the word back in and the symbolism means something. We're putting it in before the word activities. So I guess symbolically, I'm wondering what that, what that does. I'm not saying it's, um, I'm not saying I necessarily can't vote for it, but I'd like a little more information on that. And the second is, although it isn't, although I, it isn't changing, so that means I didn't realize last time that it was here. Saying that the bachelor's degree could be in education or sports management, I guess I'd like to hear more about that for two reasons. First of all, because it is still an activities director. And so, uh, someone with a sports management degree would not have studied probably unless they got it some other way, you know, plays and music and academic competitions and so forth. And the second thing is I understand and it's and it's a good thing. We, I remember a time where you had to have a master's. The the system was such that you had, we had to find people who were educational administrators who also knew IT because that was how our IT director was written, only educators come up to the second and third floor e- ever. So sometimes it makes sense to do that, right? I don't think you necessarily having been a principal makes you better at I- IT. But here we could have someone with no, who went to school strictly wanting to, you know, manage a you know, be working in professional sports as their major, as their focus and qualify here. So I guess I'd just like a little bit more on both, kind of both aspects of that.
You bet. For the first one, um, I wasn't part of the conversation about what led them to believe that they should reintroduce the word athletics as part of it. I think that it was more concerned that maybe the idea was, oh, does activities include athletics or should it be called? You're saying that that you're, you recall that conversation already kind of being had previously and maybe we don't need that. Can you clarify, please?
Well, I I think, yes, but I think there's some some philosophy behind it because I think it was always activities and athletics. But the other activities, I think, occupied such a small part of the radar that it was a philosophical change to call it the activities director. Now, if that's confusing, because the majority of the time is going to be spent on athletics because there's far more pieces, right, of busing and coordinating with other districts and things where work on musicals and plays and academic competitions is also very intensive, but it's much more locally centered. There's your moving parts. I get why they may want to put it, it may make sense to put it back in. I think I I think it's worth giving some thought over the next two weeks to the the order of the wording if we're going to do that.
Thank you. I, in my experience, this may be as innocent as when we refer to APs. People can't remember are they assistant principals or associate principals? When we say ADs, sometimes people just can't remember what the A stands for, so it could be as simple as that. Uh, we can certainly inquire about that. The second, the second question about, uh, education qualifications required. It looks like previously it had said education or sports management and the recommendation is to say, wait a second or related field. Can you clarify, um, what your thoughts are on on that addition to mitigate what you're bringing up or if you have other thoughts?
So I guess my my first thought is I I I think there's a lot of places where it does make sense to open the door to a qualified person who doesn't have the traditional, I taught for three years, I ha- I got my masters and now I want to be a a blank. I I think there's, you know, we used, like I said, we used to restrict, um, you know, that used to be a hard cap on human resources, uh, high levels of technology. Everything had that, um, had that gateway of an educator and largely I think that's good. But I I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around how why it would be a good idea if someone who if someone's passion is really for sports management, so they went to school, they majored in it. They studied, you know, they studied sports, sports marketing and and these types of things. Now they're in a position where they're going to have to work with student athletes, manage dis- you know, manage disputes about co-curricular codes and things. Managing and supervising coaching staff maybe was part of sports management. They would have no peace, no connection at all. Is it weird that our is it weird that a non, is it weird that a non educator could end up here according to our rules? I use the word educator broadly, but you know, can a non, you know, can someone who is a non educator be in charge of of facilities or IT? I would say yes. And I think so- sometimes someone with a deep educational background is also strong in those fields and that's great. I'm struggling to picture a non educator working here, although I don't want to be overly prohibitive either.
Thank you. I do, I do understand, uh, the the input. I, if it helps, I believe that in the articulation on the experience line right below, sort of bakes into the description, if somebody used that phrase earlier, that if you maybe you need to have a knowledge of what it's like to be in our schools and our co-curricular environment as part of your experience possibly.
Right?
I'd I'd like to share with the board that I have a similar concern with that. I think working closely with the activity and athletic directors in the area and looking at programs that are offered, you know, through the University of Wisconsin for sports management. I think it's a two significantly separate skill sets, especially at a high school and middle school level where our goal is to have student participations become more involved in their community and win some games, but also just grow as a human being. As opposed to when you're looking at programs, it's it's different. And I I would be in favor of having the administration part put in before a degree in sports management, because I think it's, I think it's two different things. And we are a student-focused area of knowing how budgets work, knowing how to talk to students and knowing how to work with parents and other community members is probably a more significant part of that job, especially as we look at the activities part to promote and build out than just the sports management part. And it doesn't say just, but you know, the, I think that a desired qualification would be more so that than the program of a sports management program, so.
Okay. Ricky?
Mike, to your knowledge, do we have any current activities directors that do not have a degree in education?
I I I do not know the answer to that. I apologize. To my knowledge, that hasn't been an issue historically, although we do have a lot of very dedicated, passionate, current employees that are not serving as educators that are deeply invested in our athletics and activities and other core cricket areas. That depending on how this was worded, may exclude them from consider- from consideration in the future.
Okay, any other questions, comments regarding?
Okay. Okay. Uh, revisions to Board of Education policy 341.1, um, reading goals. So we have some presentation here, um, a redlined document with a lot of new pieces.
Thank you. Uh, tonight we are bringing forward to you one piece of the requirements from Act 20 with respect to policy implementation of the statute that revises districts' responsibilities with respect to reading instruction. And this particularly is with respect to the district's reading goals. Um, in the past, as you saw the presentation earlier tonight, we have brought forward district goals various different parts of our curriculum, but the board has not formally adopted them. Act 20 requires the school board to formally adopt the district's recommendations of reading goals.
Uh, questions? Uh, James?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to under, um, section two. Then subsection D, annual Then subsection D, annual evaluation of reading curriculum. I just need a little bit of. Additional information about an annual evaluation. And how it relates to the curriculum adoption cycle. So we evaluate it on an annual basis and we go, ooh, bad. So what it, what is our, what is the mechanism for potentially changing that? Predetermined curriculum adoption cycle given an annual evaluation?
Yeah, here the word curriculum. Here is where the word curriculum is um, used broadly to include things like the scope and sequence, the curriculum maps. Up to and including the instructional materials. And so really the first thing we would evaluate annually. Let's say based on sluggish performance toward our goals is. What is, what is happening at the classroom level as it relates to, this was the projection that these skills would be taught at this time. Um, do we need to make adjustments to our curriculum as a result of that? Do our materials that you invested in support those adjustments? So. Um, decisions about the instructional materials and moving away or more toward would be connected to also. Assessing the actual scope and sequence of the class.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so if I, what I heard from you is. There is not a very strong relationship, right? Because it's the curriculum adoption cycles. Was about five years, right? And it's very stage gated um, across time. And given it an annual evaluation, it's not the intended purpose of the annual evaluation. To expedite, short circuit or otherwise manage. I- i- intervene in that five year process. Is that correct?
That five year process takes that long to and to build in the safeguards that what we're adopting is aligned with the standards. I think in the, in the case of this where we are. Um, systematically. Uh, transforming the approach to teaching reading. There are a lot of other aspects to examine within the curriculum. Uh, including how um, the literacy block in the day is organized, all of those things. But I I I I think I'm agreeing with your point that the 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 reason why we have such a deliberate and lengthy process. Is to ensure that the uh, materials we invest in are the right materials for the time.
I guess I I have one, I have one observation and there's. There's probably not a lot that we can. Do about, about this, although there's probably some. Shades of meaning we could put in how we write it. The um. I I understand that that three queuing is a a dated approach in literacy instruction and not in favor. It. It concerns me a little bit that we have. That we are defining. A specific instructional technique as banned when there's. Could theoretically be some, some reason that some student may respond to it who's struggling with other. Methods. I'm I'm assuming is this is here because the state. Forces us to do this. I see that there's not a. Punishment attached to it if you do it. But I'm, I I had to. I couldn't let that go without noting it that it's. It's concerning that this much granularity. It is, it is important that we got more. Uh, balanced and had more phonics instruction. Absolutely. The pendulum had shifted too far from that, but. Banning a specific. Technique is concerning and. I'll be more concerned if the, you know, the state legislature continues to define to that granularity. Even if, again, even if this technique is not all that great almost ever. Um, other, other questions or comments? All right. Um, we'll continue on then. We have some additional. Policies in the, in the three hundred and four hundred series.
Thank you. Um, I want to again thank our student services department, particularly our people services and special education. Departments who worked very hard to get these policies in front of you tonight, even with the start of the school year. Um, I really appreciate all of their efforts as I think David does as well. We're bringing for you tonight revisions to policy three forty two point eight, section five oh four plans and services for students with disabilities. We've just updated that to reflect our current practices, placed it in our standard format and updated our legal and cross references. Any questions on that one? Okay. Um, next we have revised our policy regarding our guidance and counseling program. That policy was last revised in two thousand and five. So it was ready for an update. Um, I Katie Kahun Suko worked very hard on this, so I want to thank her in particular. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call on myself. This is, this is so much, um, this is so. Heavily rewritten. I'm wondering what was and. Uh, uh, obvious, obviously existed probably in other bits of policy, but like what was even. There before this?
It was not very long.
Was it essentially just that there would be counseling counselors?
It it was pretty um, ambiguous with respect to the role of the program. And as I think everyone at this table knows, the critical importance that our school counseling program plays. For our students, especially over the last decade. Um, the policy was written to reflect that important role in the district as well as. The standards that have been articulated by the state and national groups.
I I think you alluded to it of how we relate to the state and national groups. I think that Green Bay. The scope of the services provided by our school counselors and our student service staff. Is amazing. When you look at other districts and I think this, this ties into it just how much. That position as a school counselor has changed since. Well, I'll look around the table, say any of us were in high school and. The, the improvements of just the skill set that they have and and how much it's grown, so. Thank you.
James?
I will just make a mention that across the last two. Um, details serve the district well, right? And I've seen and um, heard. From other districts how vague their policies are and they lead to disputes. So I really appreciate. Defining what our mandate is in bullet points.
We have a lot of enthusiastic and um, eager staff members, um, excited to get their curricular dogs in our schools. So thank you. For updating that policy, giving our students that opportunity. So tonight, um, as a result of updating. All of our policies related to animals, we're bringing you um, some updates to our policy regarding service animals. The difference between those curricular dogs and pets in classrooms is that service dogs are governed under. The I D A or under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so this policy reflects. Changes in the law as well as some updates just in contact individuals here in the district.
All right, any, any questions? Okay.
The next um, policy is updates to policy four four three point three, student use and or possession of tobacco, nicotine. Or alternative smoking products on school premises and we added and vehicles. We thank you to Christina Jingle for making the updates to this policy. We continue to try and stay ahead of the game with respect to products that are being targeted. Uh, towards our students and used in our schools and so this policy reflects those updates.
Um, in the last section under enforcement, you know, you have a section, um, line item B or. Um, applying disciplinary and other consequences. Um, that seems vague with a lot of latitudes. Can you provide a reference or? Help me understand what the scope of potential consequences or displaying actions would be?
I don't want to speak for Christina, but I can tell you what I've been familiar with and maybe David and Vicky could weigh in on this. Other consequences could include. Um, having the student do a research project, uh, some reteaching, um, time spent. Working on a a service project, those sorts of things that would not be disciplinary in nature, but could be consequential with respect to the behavior.
Uh, Brian?
I would assume that would also give us the opportunity that if a student. Isn't a spot where counseling would be beneficial, we can. Direct that or request that where that wouldn't necessarily be disciplinary, it would just be. Us helping students be successful as well. Would that potentially fall under that?
Yes, we have um. Offered A O D A services with respect to that.
Right, uh, anyone else? Okay.
Okay, and then the next um, policy is. Four four three point four, student alcohol and other drug abuse misuse. Um, we are recommending that we repeal the rule with respect to this policy and fold in that language into. That policy. Christina Jingle again um, updated this to reflect uh, changes with respect to alcohol and other drug abuse or misuse. As well as uh, to align to our multi um. Level systems of support with respect to violations. Of our court of conduct with respect to drug abuse and alcohol abuse and misuse.
All right, questions? Okay.
Finally, um, we're bringing forward updates to policy four fifty seven, suicide prevention and intervention. There's just some minor changes to this policy as this was last reviewed by the board in two thousand and twenty two.
Okay, I have, there's no questions? But um, is that all of them then? In this, in B?
Correct, and I think we already addressed C.
C is just the rule being repealed and folded into the. Policy, all right? Okay, and then we have, uh, we have revisions to the. Revisions to the COVID nineteen. Protocol and we have the motions, we have two motions listed. From the. Was it June or July? Okay, we did it in June twenty sixth, we passed motions effective for one month after that date, so they were effective on. July twenty sixth. And we the, we asked for both motions or whatever motions we made were on there. Turns out there were, were two. But we had a gating criteria for face covering and. It references measures that are not. Currently kept anymore, so. Well, um, a special board meeting. Is automatically forced if either of those. Conditions of hospitalization for COVID are met. We'll never know if they're met because it's not a tracked statistic anymore, so. And then the other motion was just um. Ending the, the tracing. The tracing program and removing a. Removing us, a set specific quarantining isolating policy. So what the. Options seem to involve, you know, we would. Probably shouldn't keep a motion in effect that has measurements that don't exist anymore, Brian?
Just wanted a clarification. Y- you're saying motions, are we looking at? Uh, these policies were approved, so they're. Policies from two thousand and twenty two. Am I correct on that? And are you looking at? Rescinding them? Is that what you're speaking of with motion?
Oh, well, there, so this is, these were, these were board directives. We didn't write it into a numbered policy, but. Un- unlike. Unlike some other times um, with people who aren't here anymore, board, the, these board motions were uh, recorded and and followed. So. We have. The. A rule that a special board meeting will be held if these triggers are tripped and the triggers aren't, they're not metrics that we keep anymore. So either. You could. Repeal it or you could. Say that we'll have some other level of COVID that we would, the, the idea was that we'd have. Rather than having a. We would let those statistics decide if we were going to force a meeting, that if these were hit. The meeting will be held. We don't have to have, it doesn't have to get political about who wants a meeting, who doesn't have a meeting. The statistics would call the meeting.
Yeah, I've, I understand that part. So I, I guess the parliamentary part of this, are we looking at rescinding these? The next meeting?
It would be an option. James?
So yeah, the first one has already been resented, right? It's, that was a motion to remove the, um, this. The close contact and quarantine, if I understand. Right? The top one, right? So that one, we don't need to take any action on it. It's the bottom one. Both of them were in there because I had in in conversation with, uh, in preparation for this meeting, um, with Melissa. You know, asked to determine. A generalized. Um, pandemic um, policy at the board level that would trigger. That, that necessity for a meeting to address a, a, an emerging threat. Um, would be called for, but. Subsequent conversations have led me to understand that. Even this policy was not really enforceable because there was a lack of statistical data. Coming from public health organizations to even support this. So I, I, I understand that now and I think we should just. You know, make a motion to rescind this um, board directive and move on.
Anyone, anyone else before Brian goes again? Okay, go ahead.
So will this be an action item at the next meeting? It'll be on the agenda to do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, anything else on this? Okay, uh, that concludes the uh, policy and governance section.
Thanks, guys. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is um. We have some, some uh, work I think to do on the. Clean our uh, our charter. For the clean energy advisory committee. As of now, our, the membership of that committee has dipped below the. The boundaries of what was set out in the charter. Um, and so we have. Um, had our communications department send out um, notices to encourage people to apply. So we will have to go through that cycle again, but in conversation.
So we will have to go through that cycle again, but in conversation, um, um, that's, so that's, that's one of the, um, issues, um. Also, the other thing that, uh, you know, we, we, we touched on this when we created this charter in this committee a little bit about how people cycle in and cycle out of this and whether or not we should have term limits, so that's another thing I think we should discuss, um, and oh God, what am I leaving out here? Well, let's leave it at that for now. How do we, how do we want people to serve and for how long? Um, and do we want to, um, impose term limits, um, on, on the people that serve on this committee? Andrew?
Well, we probably shouldn't, um, probably don't want to impose term limits if we're having trouble filling the, the seats to, to begin with. I guess my other question would be, um, you know, what, I, I think it's, it's good to just go out and recruit, I don't have a strong position on whether we should say it's between eight and fifteen, I, I don't see a reason to ban the fifteen just because we're having a hard time getting there. But I, I think we probably shouldn't have term limits and also I mean, it doesn't, if you are sitting at eight for a while, I think this said, this suggests that you, you have to get it to ten, but it doesn't say that the committee stops existing until you find two more either, it's not that tightly written, um. I would, it would be my hope that we could, you know, maybe there's just a, a dip right now, but there, I mean, it's a big, it's a big district and even twenty-five percent of the people can be from outside the, the district, it's an area with a lot of interest, so my hope is that whatever problems are maybe temporary.
Um, James, and then, um, Lynn wants to speak.
I'm trying, okay. Alright, um, so I, you know, Lynn can absolutely speak on this and provide suggestions and she may even offer to, to do the edits. Um, I was just gonna say, if no one did offer to do that, I would you know, be willing to sit down with it because I agree with you, um. Andrew, I think, uh, the district and Lori was just seeking guidance on, you know, does us dropping below ten automatically trigger having to post and having to recruit, and I think that it's reasonable to, once a year, try to reef, reef, um, um, refill or, you know, replenish the membership up to where we want it to be. Um, but I do agree that we kind of probably may have been premature and imposing limits when we didn't know if there's going to be a natural turnover of, um, participation, uh, in the, on the committee. Um, so I, I think those are two really valid points and can be written such that Lori gets what she needs and that's guidance, that she doesn't have to respond to, you know, um, potentially multiple incidents per the year. Um, and that, uh, we allow someone who's an active participating valuable member of the committee to serve as long as they want to serve at the district until such time as we have an, a more demand than we have slots.
Okay, Brian? No, Lynn, I'm sorry, Lynn is next. Yep.
No, I'm not doing it that way.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I have a question, but I just want to point out that it does say that, um, terms are two years and volun- and members may volunteer to serve consecutive terms, so they can stay on as long as they want. My question is, and maybe Kale can answer this, um, what about the core people who started right from the beginning and are still there? Have they expressed any, um, thoughts about how many members they think the committee needs to have, because we do have some very um, qualified people with expertise in the area who probably have served on different committees like this in, in, you know, in our area. And I wonder if they have any insight as to how many they need and ways to recruit and how often to recruit, has anything internally been said?
Kale, can you join us for a second? The question was, has there been any discussion among current members, um, regarding uh, maybe a number that would help the group function?
No, not at all, sorry.
Hey, go ahead.
Kale, has the, have the people on the committee ever discussed this topic about membership and that sort of thing?
I've only been a part of two meetings, um, and little correspondence alongside of that, but I've not heard, um, anything other than a resignation. I did hear our two students, the only thing that would reference any, um, anything in, in regards to this topic, our students mentioned that, um, there was not a ton of interest, at least at their schools, um, to join the committee. I, I can't remember what schools that is, but, um, so the outreach to the students would be something to focus on as well.
I think that both of them are at Preble, I want to say the one, one was a senior at Preble and one was a, um, freshman, yeah, yeah. So, okay. Uh, Brian?
Initially, I was going to ask about the phrasing with the member recruitment will aim to and whether we could, is having ten members in there, but then, um, I'm concerned with that because I don't want to have too much wiggle room as far as, and how does it look at students and stuff like that? Um, but I also appreciate what you're saying with that, Lynn, as far as the committee having input on it, but I think it's really important that it's our responsibility to set up the charter part of it and to have that part, and so taking the names and getting them in and getting the feedback, I think, is key, but I think we, we need to keep ownership and responsibility to the setup of it, if that makes sense, so.
Okay, Lynn?
I just want to be clear, I was not suggesting at all that the committee take on any of this responsibility, I was just asking because, remember, I wrote the charter and I wrote it with Ned Dorf, who it has been on the committee all along and is still on the committee, and I just, you know, my initial reaction would be to call up Ned and say, hey Ned, have you folks talked about this? I'm just asking if they have said, oh my gosh, we're, we're losing members and this is what we really need, but they haven't, so I won't worry about it. I've been at every meeting except one.
Brian?
I think the other opportunity we have with this and the, the phrasing, I, I like how it doesn't say high school students, because we also have engaged middle school students that, you know, we, we have schools that we've talked about environmental impacts that and transferring in from different buildings and the energy level there of a middle school student might be worthwhile as well, so, um, I think the board would be open to that idea and it doesn't say that it has to be high school students, so maybe reaching out and sharing that with some of our middle schools and sharing that opportunity as well, I think it, it would be something to look into, so. As a middle school teacher, I think they might like it.
Okay, so, um, anybody else? Well, we've given, uh, Lori guidance and she's acted on as far as, um, putting out a feeler to the public to apply. Um, I wish I had the, the date, I don't know, do you happen to know the date that, that the applications are cut off for applications?
It's in October.
Okay, that's fine, that's plenty of time, um, so we'll hopefully get a, a new crop of, uh, of applicants and we can shore up the numbers, um, immediately, but then, um, then, uh, you know, in, in, we're gonna, I think we talked a little bit about the spring being the best time to maybe revisit this every year to make sure that, because students will be leaving, people might be deciding, um, to, to transition off, um, that might be a good time for us to, um, just get it on our calendar every year to, um, look, look at who ma- who's, uh, what the makeup of that committee is. I mean, you got to remember, this is still very, a very, very new committee and, um, and, you know, might be having a little bit of growing pains, so. Laura?
Yes, the date is October first for the deadline to apply.
Okay, well, if anybody's listening, um, uh, please put that on your calendar if you're thinking of applying. Also, uh, just encourage board members, anyone who watching to, if they know somebody who they think would be a good fit for this committee, please, please, please reach out. Um, and let us know that you, um, would like to be considered. Brian, did you have another?
Yeah, I was going to clarify, it was October first, but Kenzie got right there, so, good job.
All right, um, do we feel like we need to, um, do any revisions to the charter? No, go ahead, James.
Uh, I, I will take a stab at providing a red line, whether we adopt the red line or not, but it will be very minor changes, just to make it very clear, um, for Lori's, um, purposes.
Okay. You know, um, go ahead, Kale, yeah. Considering, you know, that this is new and there, there's going to be a few bumps and, um, that, uh, from what I witnessed just last week, um, there's a a lot of momentum with this committee and, um, they seem to be functioning very, very well, so, all right. If we're ready to move on, then our last item for tonight is uh, board norms, uh, these were discussed at length at our board retreat, um. Each one, actually, if I remember correctly, individually can, um, discussed, uh. Tonight, we have another chance to, uh, go ahead and talk about them and I'm gonna just open up the floor to anybody who would like to do that. Lynn?
Just a question, um, based on the conversation we had at the retreat, were any of these, um, modified at all? Is this exactly?
Yeah, Kenzie took notes in minutes and, um, modified them to our specifications at that time and I think did a great job, thank you, Kenzie. It wasn't easy because it was a very lengthy conversation, um, and some of these were, you know, not without controversy, and so I thank you, Kenzie, for that. Brian?
I remember the conversation with this and, um, I agree with the concept of this, I'm concerned with the phrasing of members' will, and I think that that wasn't discussed as part of it, I don't have replacement words, but I think members' will comes down as more of directive than norms on it. And, uh, like I said, I remember the conversation with some of these specific things on there, but I'm just looking to see if there's some other way that we can phrase it than members' will, because I think that just seeks problems where there aren't problems.
Brian? I just took off what we were using as the model, so, yeah, if you want that, or we could just take that out before board meetings and then have that listed. If, if you don't want the members' will for each section.
Um, boy, I kind of like the members' will. Go ahead, Andrew.
So, um, I, I think this is, I think the, very, um, very pers- um, prescriptive. Um, it is heavily based on a WASB model that is based on one uh, one theory of governance, which is a very hands-off model, uh, something, um, you know, when we talk about focus on the board's role and not become involved in the day-to-day operations, not engage in the resolution of problems, rather will refer them to the superintendent. I, I engage in the resolution of problems all the time and I don't apologize for it, I happen to do it almost always through the superintendent through, through this superintendent because I can. But if, uh, you know, we're elected officials and if the, if the day came that we had to use other, other methods and other channels because something was badly wrong, or if board members got elected because in the future something was, was badly wrong, um, I get that there's no, you know, punishment here, uh, it's not, there's not really a way that it could be um, binding, um, I'm a little concerned, uh, it seems to be a little bit a little bit heavy to, to be talking about demonstrative, right down to non-verbal gestures, I mean, I I, I think it is trying to write, it's trying to create a level of friendliness far beyond the, a very high bar, and like I said, I encourage anyone who thinks that there was a problem here anytime in the last ten years to check out, uh, uh, smaller school boards meeting and see, see what you would think of that, or go find one from, from the past. I'm not intending to wordsmith a lot here, um, I'm probably just gonna vote no. Um, you know, members will support the decisions of the board, I, I think there's, you know, there's plenty of, there are, there's decisions we've made that if there was new momentum to change the decision, I would do that, uh, I'm not gonna go out and say that a board member is stupid, that they voted a certain way, but yes, I would advocate to change certain things if there was momentum for it, so I, I think it's I, I don't the right thing to, it, it seems to take a lot of the elected official aspect out of, out of this, and I think it, I think it goes too far, um. I actually, I used my cell phone during this meeting for something related to helping me understand, um, the three queuing better, because I hadn't looked that up quite well enough, and this is probably the first and last time I'm gonna explain why I use my, my phone, but it, it was actually for board business, um, legally for board business, so I'll probably be outvoted, probably six to one, but that's where I'm at. That said, I'd probably follow all of them, I, but it's, there's something just a little heavy-handed about the feel of it for me.
Anybody else? James?
So, the, the one that I feel like is kind of anomaly is, is number four, and I, I would say that I'm okay getting rid of it, and the reason why is there's actually a policy that dictates, um, that we've delegated the operations of the, uh, district to the, um, superintendent and it establishes where we are, and again, you can agree or disagree with that position, I just don't think it needs to be in both norms and in policy, the, the goal for norms would be to the decorum and the behaviors that, uh, we would, um, hope establish a respectful, non-hostile, uh, work environment, and you, you're right, there might be some specifics um, that, um, you know, individual people tend to say go too far, but that, they're norms, right, um, so they're, they're not meant to, um, provide any kind of sanction, um, if they are, um, about, um, uh, crossed, so your statement that, um, you intend to follow all of them is strong enough for me, right, it, that they do kind of hit the, yeah, this, this looks like, um, the behaviors of a healthy board and, and, you know, writing them down to have a common understanding of where they are, I think has some value.
Would anybody else like to speak? Lynn?
I just, have there always been board norms for this board? I, I, I mean, I was on the board for a year and a half before I ever heard about them or saw them, I um, is, is this something new that you, you did? Andrew gave us copies of previous board norms, it through email that we looked at, but I just don't understand, is it just good policy? What's the background of this?
We did have, as we, as we covered at our retreat, um, uh, board norms for maybe several years, um, and that was, uh, that was worked, we that was worked, we worked as a board together because we weren't functioning very well together and we hired a couple of different outside entities to come in and help us with that. I mean, we covered that in the retreat. So that, you know, that and that and for a while, we functioned under those norms and read them at each meeting. I think there was seven or eight and that, yeah. So but during COVID, I think COVID kind of derailed that a little bit and at some point we stopped doing it. So and now they're back. So I, I mean, I'm curious about how people are feeling about this. I I think having norms like this kind of spelled out and and sort of all in one place. I mean, I get what you say about policy, James, but I think it doesn't hurt to have have it there as well. I don't, I, I think it's good to have a list, a short, a short list is that we feel our our norms that govern our behavior at board meetings, et cetera. Go ahead, Brian.
I agree. I think that there's, there's a need to maybe have macro expectations with it. I brought this up during the retreat as well, where I think when we drill down into specific behaviors, I think that's a little concerning, which I brought up before. I think general guidelines, which you know, we're professionals, we're elected officials, we know how to do that is a better approach with it. Andrew, I might, I might join you on that because, like I said, I think there's very specific things on here that don't need to be on here. I'll introduce some motions when we address it the next meeting with it. I think the spirit of it is, you know, we'll be professionals and address things that we have go up, but yeah, I agree with you, Andrew. I've got some concerns with it as well, but well, I gotta think of how to wordsmith it, too, so.
Anybody else? Coop, go ahead.
I would have to to agree with what Brian said that perhaps we could motion this to the next meeting to have a further discussion on it. As this point, I'm still a little bit, I mean, just going through every key point that was listed in here. I think that we can do a better job. And I think that it boils down to the fact that we all are respected professionals in each of our areas of expertise and that I don't feel the need to be taken by the hand and and say, can't use your cell phone or can't drink on the table or, you know, those are just some of the samples, but but I definitely would agree that maybe we need to think liberator of these things, maybe the motion to the next meeting. I definitely concur with that.
Anybody else? Brian?
One of the things to look forward to and and I bring this up at times, I recognize that this was developed during a previous board when we were, when the board was going through some challenges with it is that were dictated by what we want to do moving forward with with it. And I, and I think that was the intent and the spirit of the the retreat, and I think we accomplished that, but I just want to bring that back up, that this is a unique group of seven individuals and our superintendent and administration on here that when we look forward, we keep looking forward with it, that things that have happened in the past, we recognize, but just there's significant turnover that happens on boards on a regular basis. So establishing norms that are specific to events or anything else that is is helpful as well.
Anybody else? Well, this this particular item did trigger a lot of really good discussion at the retreat. We talked about it for quite a long time, went through all these individually and that in itself was a good exercise to to just sort of air some things and talk about how we felt about about, you know, just how we conduct ourselves. So in that, in that way, I think that was a positive thing. So I'm hearing that maybe, go ahead, Rick.
Well, my only observation is this, if we are in fact adhering to and living by Robert's Rules of Order, if we are living by Robert's Rules of Order, there are there are things in there that that address decorum. And and so I'm wondering if this thing is not redundant to that, that maybe what we need is a review of those stated rules that are contained within that so that we're, we're not reinventing the wheel or getting, you know, overly prescriptive in certain things. I just think a review of that would then and we could probably see that, okay, yeah, it covers all of these things. Don't interrupt, don't disrupt. It's all in there. So I would just say, let's, let's put these two things side by side and see if what we've created here isn't redundant.
I, I don't, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian, and then I'll speak.
I know in our policies, Robert's Rules is alluded to, but I don't know if it's an official policy that we utilize Robert's Rules, and it's been kind of something that I've processed in my head as well. Yes, the theory and the practice might be two different things with that, so.
I would guess, I would say we're probably, go ahead and go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to understand what you mean. You're saying that Robert's Rules of Order is not the way that we have all agreed to be operating under?
Kind of. And that's a really good Robert's Rules answer. We've never, we've never followed Robert's Rules directly. And I am kind of looking at Melissa and I'm thinking she might be scouring board policy right now. I'm not sure. It's convenient that she's right behind you, Rick, so I can kind of do both at once here. If I remember correctly, board policy says that Melissa's coming up. That's not what board policy says, but Rick, I've, I've brought that up before. We sort of follow Robert's Rules, and I think that Robert's Rules would help alleviate a lot of questions and just run a more efficient meeting at times with it, so.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I'll, I'll read its policy 181. "In the absence of any specific legal requirement or any local rule of order or procedure that has been established by the board, the board directs the presiding officer to rely on including the procedures and procedural flexibility that Robert's Rules allow for small boards to conduct all board meetings. The presiding officer and board shall refer to Robert's Rules or their knowledge of the rules of order to resolve procedural inquiries, points of order objections and appeals during the meetings. Any misapplication or the failure to precisely follow Robert's Rules or any other local discretionary procedural rule shall not standing alone be construed to render any decision made by the board void, voidable, or otherwise invalid. Individual members are expected to raise procedural inquiries, points of order objections, and appeals at meetings on a timely basis."
I feel like we do that. I, I, it's a, it's a kind of a, I know, Brian, but it's, you're using that nonverbal stuff right now. But, but, I mean, I've been on the board for quite a long time and we've always had a some, what firm approach to that, but it's not always dominant. And and we've been able to function, I think, pretty well. But go ahead, James, and then Lynn.
Speak to the point that I don't think we have coverage by Robert's Rules. The House of Representatives has rules of the House around comportment, what you can and should not be doing that are outside the bounds, right? And so if you look at those regulations, you can't wear a hat. You can't use electronic devices in the chambers. So there are sets of comportment and behaviors that are addressed in rule and norm versus leveraging just Robert's Rules for everything.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, okay, then again, I would say set these two documents next to each other and see if we're not being redundant in in any one of those cases. Then you're right, that that may pare down this list here to just those specific items.
I'm sorry, Lynn, I jumped over you. Go ahead.
That's okay. I was just going to throw out an idea. I have been with an organization in the past that because when when Melissa read this, she made it clear, I mean, the policy makes it clear that we can create our own local rules. Okay? I have been with an organization that took Robert's Rules of Order and culled from it their own simplified version. It was an association, if I remember correctly, Green Bay Neighborhoods, I believe, tells neighborhood associations that they are to follow Robert's Rules of Order. And we took it and we made it our own and simplified it because it just had to be something that worked for people that didn't attend formal meetings all the time. That is something that could be done here if you wanted to do that.
Anybody else before Brian? Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Before Brian is not how a speaker's list works. And I'm serious with that. It's, it's as acknowledgement as you go and the hands come up and I'm, and I realize we're a friendly group with this. I appreciate what you're saying there, Lynn. We're also a group that's responsible for a $400 million budget and a lot of important decisions. And while this group has been able to function with it well, the formality of motion second, which which we cover in our minutes, I think is really important. And I think we need to continue, and I think we should look at what we follow with Robert's Rules and what we need to follow with it, just so we are definitely having votes on things that need to be voted on when they're being presented, which which we do. But there's, there's some times where we discuss things and we've, it's not an action item, but we've never really stated that we've done things. And it's not, it's not formal motions, but like introductions of things. So I think that there's an opportunity for us to tighten up using Robert's Rules on some of the areas. So because there are opportunities for people to speak more than once on it, and there are opportunities for pros and cons, and that does influence the discussion at times with it. So my two cents.
I mean, the more, the more we talk, the more it seems clear that there's not really an appetite to vote on this next month, our next meeting. Am I am I misreading that? Yeah, the norms. I mean, do we, do we want to pursue this? Otherwise, we're wasting time and we don't need to have it on the agenda next, next.
And that's, and that's a prime example of where following Robert's Rules, whether we know it's going to be voted on or not, that's the time to vote on it. Now, do we bring it up or not? If it's been brought onto our agenda, I think we need to look at least at holding a formal vote of it next week. Whether it passes or fails, then we've, we've made a decision. I'm not against the concept of it. I'm not against the motion with it. I think it's just another one of those opportunities of it's a yes or a no at that point, rather than the opinion of the chair without taking a formal vote. And I think that's where we kind of run into some issues.
All right, then it's going to stay on the agenda. And we can talk about it again in two weeks and vote on it and amend it and do all the things. So is there any other discussion about it? Right. All right. That completes our agenda for tonight. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? I opposed. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Bye, Coop.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.